Time shall be set aside on the agenda for receipt of public comments. Public comments will be received with respect to agenda items prior to vote for the ratings and resolutions to be adopted. An additional opportunity for public comment will occur later in the meeting. Public comment shall be limited to four minutes per speaker. Unused time may not be transferred to another speaker. Persons may speak once per public comment period. I direct the deputy clerk to enter into the minutes of this meeting as public's announcement and the events that it notices this need. Commissioner Apple?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connell?
Here.
Deputy Director Polian?
Here.
Commissioner Singh?
Here.
Director Hobson?
Here.
Thank you, Erin. I am looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the public and conference meetings of March eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Salute.
Second. Thank you, public, deputy, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Tonight, we are recognizing Women's History Month in the contributions of some outstanding women from our county who are helping to break down barriers and inspire future generations. Would Maple Shade Councilwoman Sandy Nunes please come forward? So I have to stand here and read all this amazing stuff about you, okay? I do. I know. Smile as people take photos. Sandy Nunes is a member of the Maple Shade Township Council and also a vice chair, also the vice chair of the Burlington County Bridge Commission. She is a longtime Burlington County resident and has owned and operated Ellis Chocolate Store in Maple Shade for more than two decades. Sad to report they've sold the store. Just retweeting. Sandy serves on the Main Street Maple Shade Board and was the agency's executive director. She's also worked as a real estate agent and as an assistant art director for PSCNG. And she was one of the original members of the Maple Shade Women's Association. In addition to her experience in government and business, Sandy has volunteered with animal aid and as a youth softball umpire. Her leadership in service to Maple Shade and the Burlington County residents served as an inspiration to all residents, particularly young women who aspire to intergovernment, government, or operate a business. On behalf of the Burlington County Commission of Board, I'd like to present you with this certificate for women. Okay, I just wanted to thank the commissioners. This is such an honor and I am humbled by the whole situation here. We never expected it. So please let me recognize all the women before us and that are gonna come, be coming before us later on, that they do the, as many things as this great commission has done with their dedication. Thank you so much. We are honoring next and another, another amazing woman. Would Chrissy Howell of Burlington County Chamber please come forward? You see the drill, gotta stand here long.
All right, all right, all right.
Chrissy is the president and CEO of the Burlington County Regional Chamber of Commerce. She has served, she has served in this post for more than twenty years. A graduate of Widener University, Chrissy started leading the chamber in two thousand and two after serving as a special assistant for the South Jersey Transportation Authority and the deputy director of intergovernment affairs for the New Jersey Governor Donald DiFrancesco. Under her leadership, the chamber has become a leading voice for business in Burlington County and beyond. And she has helped expand the organization's membership and its programming to match the evolving needs of the area businesses and economy. Chrissy and the chamber has also become one of the county's strongest partners with economic development and she's helped with some of our largest business initiatives, including Burlington County Restaurant Week and Downtown Tours. As a member of the Joint Base Open House and other military support groups, she has helped us and the members of the business community forge closer ties with Joint Base McGuire Dixon and Lakers. By working together, we're making Burlington County a premier destination, not just for businesses, but for everyone. We can't thank her enough for all she's done and continues to do for our county. On behalf of our board, please accept a certificate in honor of Women's History Month.
Thank you, Erin. Thank you so much. Uh, just thank you so much for this honor. You know, I always feel odd getting honors for doing something that I love to do and the opportunity to help foster future women leaders, um, as well as help develop this county that I grew up in and that I love, um, is truly an honor and I'm truly grateful for your support at the Board of Commissioners, so thank you.
Thank you. Don't go too far, we'll take a group of wine.
Okay.
I will now turn the page over to Commissioner Apple.
Thank you, George. I'd like to call up Ms. Lisa Fox-Piper. Hello, how are you? So Lisa is the executive director of the Burlington County Historical Society. She not only helps preserve Burlington County's rich history, but she in the society help bring it to life for people of all ages and walks of life. Lisa has served as the executive director of the Historical Society since two thousand and seven. Prior to coming to the society, she worked as a curator and interpreter at the Old Barracks Museum in Trenton and at the Bucks County Historical Society and Font Hill Castle Museum in Doylestown. During her tenure at the Burlington County Historical Society, Lisa has been deeply involved with the development of a children's history center, a family-friendly space where children and adults can explore parts of Burlington County's past in interactive ways. She has also advocated for the preservation of historical buildings, launched new and engaging programs and tours, and initiated the society's When Remembering COVID-nineteen project that is documenting the pandemic's impacts on county life with firsthand accounts from residents as well as photos, videos, and other resources. Lisa has also served as a grant reviewer for our county, which we very much appreciate, and the Department of Resource Conservation, and as a member of the Burlington City Tourism Council and American Association for State and Local History. Burlington County's history is one of our greatest assets and it's fitting that on Women's History Month we recognize and thank one of the women who has helped to preserve and spotlight that history so future generations can connect to and learn from it. So, thank you for all of that. And on behalf of the Burlington County Commission of Board, please accept this certificate of appreciation recognizing your contribution to women and women's history.
I have a passion for bringing history to Burlington County, so this is a great honor. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Of course. Do you want me to get it? Sure. One second, I have.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I would like to call all the otheries up for a group photo, please. Ready?
Yep.
Thank you again. Congratulations again, everyone. We will now move on to public comment on agenda items. Anyone who wishes to speak on other topics will have a chance to do so later in the meeting. When it's your turn to speak, please state your full name and address for the record. Each speaker is limited to four minutes and they only speak once per public comment portion. I see that we have two folks who signed up for public comment on agenda items. Our first, Ms. Phillips? Are you here, Ms. Phillips?
Good evening, everybody in general. My name is America Phillips. I live in one fifteen Tennessee Trail Brown's million years for eight oh one five. I have one other question in here, in age twenty. Authorization to amend the shared service agreement with the Pemberton Township for the period September first, twenty-second to August thirty-first, twenty-three. From the twenty-twenty-two operation helping the grant for a amount of excess seven thousand dollars for mobile grocery out ratio from the prosecutor's office. Can you tell me this is going to take place in, uh, by Sunbury? In Pemberton, on Brown's Middle Road?
Yes. So this is to offset the police time when we have these services? So as far as location goes, it's, it's a mobile service?
Okay, then, because I was attending my township meetings in the past and I understand the, um, the mobile grocery and asking for, uh, security. They are for police security.
Right. This is for that police, security, for that service.
Okay, does mean the Pemberton going supply or the county going supply the security?
It's Pemberton Township Police that are the security.
Okay, let me see. Give me a second. Got it, yes. Okay, and age thirteen, authorization to submit a grant application for any years in addition on highway traffic safety for a amount of twenty thousand dollars. No county match for pedestrian education enforcement program in conjunction with the local police department throughout the county for the period of July first, twenty-three to June thirty, twenty-four for the sheriff's department. Can you tell me, explain, yes, give me some things in there? What do they be doing to educate the pedestrian? What kind of education they going to give them or whatever?
This is for a grant for the sheriff's department on traffic safety.
Okay, it's only for, for the sheriff, not for the other ones. Okay, that's what I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Luis Lopez. Hi, Luis.
Hello.
How are you?
Buenos dias. Namaste. Uh, wanna say thank you for, um, under all the women's, uh, history. Appreciate it. That's a good thing. Uh, would like to mention three persons if you mind. The three persons that helped all my highly citizens is, uh, is Tara and, uh, Kim Brody. They're, they're, uh, you know, I started them with history.
So, okay, that's fine, but that's the next public comment. What's your public comment?
Oh, public comment is, uh, age four, five, and the very last, nomination in election. Just three comments.
I'm sorry, did you say age four or five and age twenty-four?
Yeah. Yeah, nomination election for library commissioner.
Oh, okay.
Alcomis.
Okay.
Can you explain that to us, first two? Yeah. Four or five minutes.
So this is just for age four, it's just an amendment? So what we've been doing for the Department of Finance is just an amendment to the policy? So we're just making an amendment to the actual policy? That's age four. Age five?
Age five is, um, we are going back out for a request for qualifications for our attorney, uh, hearing officer pool. An RFQ.
And then the, we're making an appointment to the library commission?
Yeah.
Okay, question?
Uh, tag me in with that too.
Tag you in.
I'm here, man. I've been, uh, let me be, you know, with the other person talking along for the.
Saying that you would like to.
Tag along with the, uh, with the.
Give you the process for, um, wanting to serve on appointment on.
Yeah, be like, uh, an intern or something.
Gotcha. But normally, if you want every looking to serve, you can actually just send an email to us and, and whatever commissions you look, you're interested in. If there's a position, when it comes, some of the boards and commissions have requirements, so if, if there's a spot for you, Luis?
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much for your question.
You.
Do we have anyone else for public comments on agenda items? Do we have anyone else for public comments on agenda items? Seeing none, I'm closing this portion of public comment. We will now move on to resolutions. I make a motion to adopt resolution H-one. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Erin, please do a roll call.
Commissioner Apple?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Connell?
Yes.
Deputy Director Polian?
Yes.
Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Director Hobson?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. I would like to make a motion to, to resolutions H-two through H-fifteen for unanimous consent.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Deputy Director Polian?
Thank you, Director. I would like to move resolutions H-sixteen, H-seventeen, H-eighteen for approval by unanimous consent.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Commissioner Apple?
Thank you, Director. I would like to make a motion to approve resolutions H-nineteen through H-twenty-three for unanimous consent.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Commissioner O'Connell?
Thank you, Director. I'd like to move resolution H-twenty-four through unanimous consent.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. We will now move on to nomination and election for the library commission. I'm looking for a nomination of one member to the Burlington County Library Commission for a four-year term effective March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three to December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Do I have any nominations?
Director, I would like to nominate Stephanie Lagos.
Thank you. Are there any others? Hearing none, I am closing the nominations. Please vote by name. Erin, please do a roll call.
Commissioner Apple?
Nate Rastan.
Commissioner O'Connell?
Ms. Redd.
Deputy Director Polian?
Stephanie Lagos.
Commissioner Singh?
Stephanie Lagos.
Director Hobson?
Stephanie Lagos. Thank you so much, Erin. Congratulations to Stephanie. Do we have any questions from the media? Do we have any questions from the media? Seeing none, I'm closing this portion. We will now move on to public comments on non-agenda items. As stated before, we will, uh, each speaker is limited to four minutes and they only speak once. When it's your turn, please state your full name and address for the record. The first person on this sign-up sheet is Ms. Phillips again. Ms. Phillips?
Good evening, everybody in general. My name is America Phillips. I live in one fifteen Tennessee Trail Brown's million years for eight oh one five. When I attend the meeting last time, you find a mistake, I said to the commissioners, thank you, because the, uh, the information Mrs. Hobson gave me, I need to reach the people and some of them, they haven't replied back. But, um, in reference to the highways, to fight to the east and seventy east and Spring Lake Boulevard in seventy east, uh, that is going to work in any right now. And I also brought it to their attention before my circle that, that we need more, um, lights or something in there because it's very danger in, in the roads because I noticed trouble. Those highways most every day. We need like a left turn, uh, lane, especially in Route Seventy, uh, east, uh, going to, uh, Spring Lake Boulevard because like I said, pretty soon will be two, a year that we lost. Um, we had two deaths and less than a day apart. And I think right now the spring is coming and we have the people who come to the state and they are right, right of course. We wanna send them happy after they, um, they visit the state, not to send them in coffins. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Next, we have Mr. Michael Tan.
Michael Tan, South Tanton Township. I've been here a number of times over the last three years or more and I brought up the subject of tuition for college that the county should have a program where they pay a certain amount of the tuition each year and it would go off, providing they've been county residents for two years or more and they have a passport. And the reason for the passport is they'd have to put their age on it and their address on it and that would certify for their two years of residency in the county. Originally, when the college started, the county subsidized quite a bit. And the community college thing in the county was quite popular in the late fifties and then it finally started in, in the sixties there. And the county subsidized it and it was a very reasonable price for residents to go to school and get a higher education. Since then, something has slipped. The county has gradually gone down of what the cost is and the cost of education has gone up quite a bit. And I think one of the most important things that you could do is education in Burlington County. It has to be done and you should get into it. And I have proposed that you get into it over a three-year period. The first year at twenty-five percent you would subsidize and then after that, the second year you go into fifty and then seventy-five percent and possibly even get a loan program going at a very, very low interest rate for twenty-five percent. So eventually, you'd be subsidizing seventy-five percent of the tuition only, nothing else. Just the tuition, two years, and you'd put a cap on it as far as income of maybe a combined income of a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five thousand for it. And I think the county could afford it. It's, and you'll find out, even though the total tuition for Burlington County is probably around twenty thou, twenty million dollars, the part that I'm talking about that would be eligible would be very small, especially in the first year and after three years. But I think you should look into it and possibly form a committee or something, but do something. This is third year, I think, I'm bringing it up. Three years and I haven't heard an answer back yet on any commissioner about this subject. And I'd like to hear something back at some time, maybe not tonight, but sometime in the future. But I think you ought to look into it. It's a very important ingredient in running the county, here for the health and the welfare of the county. Well, this is part of health and welfare of Burlington County. Not only young people, but people of all ages so that they can improve themselves and get on with it and be viable. And also for the county. On jobs in the county, if you look at the jobs in the county, a lot of them call for a higher education, associate degree or a degree. And this would be another help in helping your economic part of the county. And I think you should look at the statistics of education when they start the community college, how after ten years, at the educational level went up in Burlington County and after twenty years it went up. And I think you should look at that or get a committee to review it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments, Mr. Tan. Mr. Luis Lopez?
Good evening. My name is Luis Lopez, ninety-eight level, drive my hobby in New Jersey. First, uh, who, uh, you are nominated for, for library commission? I heard that name before. Who is she?
Um, from, um, from what I recall, she is the chief of staff for the first lady of our state.
Okay. Okay, I just heard that name before. I just wanted to clarify who is she? Thank you. And for Mr. Singh, I liked watching the video. It's very funny. My mother liked it, uh, of the wrestling, uh, match. It's perfect. I like the people that are participating, uh, wrestling. Thank you for, you know, doing a great job. And, uh, have you reached a famous person for the last meeting I've been here?
I'm sorry.
Uh, have you reached, uh, for, uh, Isabel, uh, LaBeau, the two thousand and twenty-three figure skating? Have you tried to reach her?
Oh, have we reached out to the figure skater?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, just to have her as a guest, you know what I mean?
You know, you can always, you can always invite her. This is a public meeting.
Uh, I, I prefer, you know, I prefer the county trying to reach her.
Okay.
Uh, just to have her as a guest, I mean, she's for, you know, for my hobby. I would like to, you know, I know she's a very patient person, but if she get a phone call from you guys, but before it's from me, I'm just a regular wrestler then, uh, I would love that. And one last thing, I would like to, the county keep protecting the farm and not building, no, over farm. For example, do you know the status of the sunny farm in West Hampton?
The farm?
Yeah. Do you know any status of that farm?
I, I don't know the status of the farm off, offhand, but.
Any way I could figure out what's the status?
It's, I would think you would have to reach out to West Hampton. It's not one of the county farms, I don't think.
Oh, West Hampton?
You would have to think out to, you would have to reach out to your local letting in West Hampton.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Um, do we have anyone else for public comment? If there is anyone else for public comment? Seeing none, I'm closing this portion of public comment. We will now move on to comments by commissioners. Commissioner Singh?
Uh, thank you. Um, congratulations to Sandy Nunes and Chrissy Howell, uh, on being recognized as leaders in their, uh, in our communities and in their professions. Um, again, congratulations to Stephanie Lagos, uh, while she is serving the county in every commission. Um, and happy Ramadan to all those celebrate. So Ramadan, it begins today, um, uh, the holy month in, in Islamic community and it will go on for the next month, uh, going through the next month, mid-April. So I wanted to take a moment to wish everybody happy Ramadan. Uh, and thanks, Luis, for watching the movie. Uh, as a kid, I never, or as a student, I never walked in by the wrestling mat or, or kids wrestling when I was in school and now more of my older kids are wrestlers and, um, I'm learning all the techniques. My girl Lisa pulled the bodies and that's for sure in all the matches. All right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Obama?
Thank you, Director. I'd like to thank everyone for taking the time to come out with us tonight and, uh, for those who had comments for us to share. Thank you for sharing those comments. I'd like to add my congratulations to the women that we honored tonight as well as Stephanie Lagos, uh, her, her appointment to the library commission. I'd also want to thank the Burlington County Education Association and the Sidumenson School District for their invitation to their Read Across New Jersey reading celebration at the New Albany School in Sidumenson last Thursday. Uh, I got to read to a class of kindergartners and I have to tell you, of all the things I get to do, it's one of my favorite, uh, aspects of this job. I'd like to thank our library director, I see her in the back there, Rajanadas, for setting up two visits yesterday to two member libraries in Crosswicks in Vincent Town. Member libraries are not part of the county library system per se, but they perform an invaluable service for residents of the county. I'd like to thank Beth Lawrence Gill, who's the library director in Crosswicks, for taking the time to show us the branch and to tell us some of its history. The library is in a former firehouse and is lovingly maintained. And while we celebrated the one-hundredth anniversary of the Burlington County Library, the first library system, county library system in the state, the Crosswicks Library has celebrated its two-hundredth anniversary. And in a nod to Women's History Month, it was founded by women in Crosswicks. I also want to thank Miley, I hope I say this right, Irian, and she's the library director in Vincent Town. She also took time yesterday to tell us and show us the Vincent Town Library. It's housed in two buildings, one of which was also a former firehouse. And thanks also to Beth and Don, two of the trustees of the Vincent Town Library, for taking time to be there and to talk with me about the, uh, the library and the functions that it performs. And it not only, uh, services the residents of Vincent Town, but it also serves the residents from Chatsford and Shabam that come to their facility. Tomorrow, we're gonna visit three more member libraries in Florence, Burlington, and Delanco. Deputy Director Polian is gonna be joining us for whatever will fit into his schedule. And these visits will honor a pledge I made back when I was liaison to the library and I wanted to visit all of the branches. Well, I didn't realize that after I had visited all the branches, there were member libraries and I became director and my time was on my own. So thanks again to all those concerned. Everybody get home safe and thank you, Director.
Thank you. Commissioner Apple?
Thank you, Director. Uh, thank you, everyone, for coming out and participating in the process. Thank you to all of our department heads and all of our county employees for, for everything they do for us in the county. Uh, I wanted to express my appreciation for those women that we have spotlighted this, at this meeting and the meeting prior and all the women making impacts in our county who are not spotlighted because we have, we have so many amazing women in our county. So we're doing amazing things every day and very many of them work for our county and we appreciate them. I just wanted to say that Parks, uh, the Parks Department has their new spring, uh, spring program guide is available online and it's chock full of really great things to do for people and families. Uh, we have May Fair coming up at Smithville and there's a free drive and movie at the fairgrounds on two oh six. We have May Fair coming up at Smithville, and there's a free drive and movie at the Fairgrounds on two oh six. And classes at the Ag Center and so many other things. So I encourage everyone to check that out and get out there and do really fun things in the county. And be careful in your home. Thank you very much, Director.
Thank you. Deputy Director Polian?
Thank you, Director. I share congratulations for everyone who was recognized this evening. One of the things about March that a lot of people probably don't know, don't pay any attention to is, March twenty-ninth is National Vietnam War Veterans Day. And since we won't be here at the county, I'd like to point that out. As you know, the commission strongly supports our veteran population, as does the county. And I just wanted to recognize on March twenty-ninth, if you say a little prayer, believe it or not, I didn't know this statistic, but there were nine million Americans who fought in that war. So we have a lot to thank. I want to, once again, thank all the department heads and heads of our departments for everything that they do every day. You make us look great, and I appreciate everything that you do. And thanks to everyone for coming, and be safe on the.
Thank you so much. My comments will be brief. Very quickly, Mr. Tan, I think what you're asking is already in play at the state level. And as a county, we do contribute to Rowan College at Burlington County. So I don't know if we would want to reinvent the wheel, but happy to have an additional conversation with you to look at what's already available at the state level for residents, in addition to what the county already provides to our community college. Lastly, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the amazing women who work for Burlington County. I say it to some of them privately, I say it publicly, but you guys know who the rock stars are, the real rock stars, right? So we've got Eve Cullen, and we've got Ashley Donnell. And of course, our chief financial officer, who is in her, up to her neck in preparing out budget for us. So just a huge thank you to the women, and of course, Charlene Webster, Erin Kelly, Stacy Dayar, Deana, Mary Pat, all of you guys know how hard you work. And I just want you to hear it from me again, that I sincerely thank you for all that you do. Thank you so much for your service. Thank you to our sheriff officers, thank you for being here, thank you for your service. There's too many women to mention, so I just want to say to all of the amazing women that work for our county, thank you so much for all that you do every single day. That concludes my comments. I am now moving forward, motion to adjourn.